Your cell phones? I will officially call the Brevard City Council, our regular meeting of Monday, May 20th, to order. Welcome to everybody that has joined us here in person and welcome also to everybody that is watching us as we livestream this. I want to start by introducing the people sitting up here. To my far right is our city attorney, Mac McKellar. Next to Mac is councilman Lauren Wise. Next, we have councilwoman Pamela Holder. Then we have councilman Mac Morrow. I'm Mayor Maureen Kopeloff. On my immediate left, we have our city clerk Denise Hodston. Next to Denise, we have councilman and mayor pro tem Gary Daniel. Then we have councilman Erin Baker. And on my far left, we have our city manager, Wilson Hooper. With that, all right. Thank you, guys.[224.12][224.12](Laughter). Yeah, yeah. A great group of people sitting there.[228.23][228.23](Laughter). All right. All right. And at this point, I would like to welcome and ask Pastor Brian Land from Grace Brevard Church to please give our invocation. Pastor, welcome very much to our city council meeting.
Thank you so much. So I am Brian Land at Grace Brevard, which is about five blocks from here on the corner of Jordan and Johnson. And just very briefly, very briefly, about who we are, is we are a community of faith that we are dedicated to serving this town. And so one of the things that we do this summer is we're, every kid that gets a reduced or free lunch, we will hand-deliver lunches to those kids all summer long, called a backpack buddies. We're also working with Cove Church and their Cove Shelter for more shelter for those who are having housing needs. And lastly, we also like to have fun. And once a month this summer, we're having a square dance, hosting a square dance. It's not, it's not a church square dance. It is a community-wide, we just want to enjoy Brevard. We're starting an arts council and just trying to serve our town, that we love it. So we are very grateful to be part of this amazing town. So let me pray for us. Lord, we do thank you. What an amazing opportunity to live in one of the most beautiful places on earth. Lord, thank you for the great people. Thank you for nature and the trails, the fun, the community. Thank you, Lord, for how much you have blessed us and help us to not forget that. Help us to not forget that it's because you love us that much, that you give us incredible blessings and surround us with that. I do pray this evening for wisdom. I pray for a community of people that can listen and hear, a community of people that can interact and collaborate, for all the items on the agenda, for things like budgets and all that has to happen. Lord, that we would be efficient and wise and think of those marginalized who need help as we make decisions for our town. So, Lord, this night is for you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Brian. We appreciate it. All right, if everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, honor, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you have a quorum. All members are present.
Councilmembers, you've got a copy of the draft agenda. Are there any proposed modifications to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Councilmembers, you were sent the minutes of the February 29th, 2024 Strategic Planning Retreat. Do I have any changes or corrections to the February 29th minutes? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. You also received the May 6, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. At this time, we will have public comment. The public is invited to speak during public comment at this time on any topic unless it is a public hearing item on this agenda. Anyone who wants to speak must register with the city clerk, which is what the signup sheet is. When it is your turn, step to the podium in front of city council. State your name and address clearly. Limit comments to three minutes or less and avoid repetition. I will give you a warning when you have 30 seconds left. Direct comments to the full council, not to an individual council member or to staff. And groups are encouraged to appoint a spokesperson on their behalf. I will call people up in the order in which you signed up. And our first speaker is Jeff Adams.
Jeff Adams, 118 Ridgeway, Etowah. But I'm here on behalf of Transylvania County. I wanted to announce and invite everyone to our Transylvania County 2050 Comprehensive Plan update meetings that we'll be launching here in June. If you look at the handout that I gave you, and we'll be posting these hopefully everywhere you turn. But we'll start off with two kickoff events, one on June 4th at 6 o'clock at the Transylvania County Library for the city of Brevard, and then we'll have a June 6th at the Rosman Town Hall. And that'll be followed by about a dozen community center-based events out in, across the county. And also at, one at El Centro and then one at Mary C Jenkins as well. And so we're hoping to get as many people involved in this process. As you guys know very well, that they're only, comprehensive plans are only as good as the input that you get from the community. And we're excited to be building on the strength of your all's comprehensive plan and want to work with you guys and your staff on this. And we'll be meeting with your staff tomorrow to discuss this. So excited about that. We're going to have three community engagement phases. This one, which will be getting the kind of information out there, our community snapshot information that we've collected. Then we'll be putting out a survey in the middle of summer. And then we will be going back out in the fall with priorities, priority sessions with various communities. So pass this along. We'll share and share it with any organizations that you're working with, and we hope to see everyone in there. And thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Jeff. And we certainly look forward to the county getting their new comprehensive plan done. All right, our next speaker is Diane Moore. Ms. Moore, your turn. No, no, we need you to come up to the microphone so everyone can hear.
All righty.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Diane Moore, and I hope I can get all this in before two minutes. I've been harassed by the city. I have came in here and asked questions, 2022, let's say, 2022, but I couldn't ask questions. Okay, number one, the city has harassed me about our property and lot. The beginning of my state started on James Street, which is the side of my house, and it runs up 125 feet to Thomas Street. They started out with my address. I got a letter saying I don't live on West Main Street anymore. I live on James Street. I called them, picked up the phone. I said, I do not live on James Street. I said, that's the side of my house. My house faced West Main Street. This trash been going on up until now. They got a project going, the city, and I don't want to stop the project. I just want them to leave me alone. And it's going on and on, the neighbors and the neighbors. They had a black car sitting on the Lot 29 the day I retired. And I said, well, whose cars there? And when the neighbors moved in again, Mr. Bobby Martin made a rigged-up driveway on the Lot 29, and it's still there with cars been on it ever since 2002. And I want the harassment to stop and leave me alone. Is my two minutes up?
You have one more minute, Ms. Moore.
Uh-oh.[817.25][817.25](Laughter). And Mr. David Love said about man in my house, he said he was gonna have a man to come, where the man sit. He came to my house, run the door there after they took up Mr. Bobby Martha's water meter and put it on the Lot 29. Then he sent a guy to my house saying he was coming to take up the water meter. The water meter still sitting on the Lot 29.
30 seconds, Ms. Moore.
Okay, keep telling me. And I just wanted to stop and leave my land alone. When the guy came to take the, said he come to take up the meter, I had a special appointment in Hendersonville, because I'm still a sick person, but God said persevere, and that's what I did. But...
Time, Ms. Moore.
Time up.
Time up.
Oh, well, I'll come back the next time.
Our next speaker, whoops. Now, Ms. Jones and Ms. Gordon, you want to talk on the property tax. Are you, did you want to talk about the budget?
Budgets.
So you should actually be on our, our public hearing, not just this. I'm going to just move you to the proper sheet over there. Ms. Nguyen, you want to talk about taxes too?
Yes.
Okay, you need to be on that sheet, okay. And then, Mr. David Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you want to talk about the budget and taxes?
Well, I can leave that off. I'd like to address other concerns.
Okay, then I'll just leave you on this one, okay. All right, then I think everybody else is on other topics. All right, so we have three that are actually budget-related. These three right here.
Our city attorney is on it.
He is getting them to sign the correct sheet, okay. All right, so I am going to move down to Ashley Hart to speak.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ashley Hart, and I live at Buckberry Lane in Brevard, North Carolina. And I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. Today, I'm here as a concerned citizen and to talk about what took place in Brevard over the weekend. Up Country Brewing held a drag show outdoors very publicly, where I witnessed a drag queen parading around in a thong. This is incredibly inappropriate, and quite frankly, it was hard to see. What's even worse is they have another Pride event coming up where there is no age restriction. I don't mind someone being gay, bisexual, or lesbian, but I respectfully ask that if you're going to celebrate your sexuality, please do it indoors without children present. I look to the city leaders for help. We all know this behavior will not help Brevard grow. It will only drag us down. Let's work together to put a stop to this. This is all I have to say for now, but I will be back to give a follow-up and review of my findings after the event takes place. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. All right, our next speaker is David Warren.
My name is David Warren. I live at 36 Downing Park Court here in Brevard. I moved here with my wife in June of 2018. She used to be here with her grandmother back 50, 60 years ago, and she always wanted to come here. So we visited in 2016. We decided to move here in 2018. I was here during the snow of 2018, quite surprised at such a heavy snow. And I was grateful that when I went downtown, that I didn't have to worry about the curb. I knew it was a straight curb, so I could just park my car there. Now, because of the changes to the downtown area, I know that the design, according to the city plan, was an attractive streetscape to serve as a gateway to the downtown. But in the process, I think, I don't share your aesthetics on the changes. I like the way it was. I think anything that needs to be, you know, corrected or redone should be redone. But, you know, the loss of, what was it, 17 or 19 parking spaces? I realized then and now, other changes that are taking place, that maybe I should take a more active role. I was happy and content just to, you know, mind my own business here in Brevard, and maybe I'm in the minority, but there's a lot of people that I speak with, and it's ordinary people. They're not necessarily affluent people, but they're in Ace Hardware, or they're at Harmony Corner down on Rosman Highway, or other places like that. They have concerns about Wilson Road. I thought the first time I drove down Wilson Road, it's beautiful. Yes, I know, it involves the NC DOT, but I can't believe that they alone zeroed in with all the things going on, I-26 and everything else, they zeroed in on Wilson Road. I don't like people speeding behind me on Wilson Road. I go the speed limit, and I respectfully stay back when people want to obey the cautionary speed, and so on the yellow signs, and so they go slower than that. But I spoke the other day, I think it was Saturday, with Eric Morgan at 284 Wilson Road, how they're going to tear out a whole section of trees.
30 seconds, Mr. Warren.
And, you know, just those changes, the roundabout. I know a lot of people, no one I've spoke to approves of the roundabouts. And I called you on the phone back in September. You actually, I went down to your office. I'd seen an accident, and I went down, and I've seen more and heard more. And I went down to your office. You called me on the phone. I'm sure you don't remember the call, you don't remember me. But I've seen studies since then that roundabouts are not necessarily safer. They cause a different kind of accident, fender benders, a lot more. And I think we're going to really see them where 276 and 64 and 280 are right there, and you're going to have two lanes, and people don't always obey the laws. They're going to cross lanes.
Time, Mr. Warren.
Traffic. When I go down Caldwell, I can't even, I'm surprised if people don't even go 20 miles an hour down there. They're honking at me, but anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Let me ask one other thing. There's a program that Melanie Phillips, or Sherri Phillips, rather, gave me, and it doesn't indicate anybody on, involved in any accident, but it would help us as citizens if that was put online. We could see where accidents are, and we could see whether there's an increase or a decrease.
Okay, Mr., thank you, Mr. Warren. All right, our next speaker is Cara Bradshaw.
Good evening. I'm Cara Bradshaw. I live at 183 Argyle Circle in Pisgah Forest. I'm a member of the Brevard Transylvania Housing Coalition and Community Impact Director at Shearing House. I'd like to applaud the city leadership and council for its efforts to increase affordable housing in Brevard. The Housing Coalition is in full support of the partnership between the city and Brevard Davidson River Presbyterian Church to develop affordable housing in our community. I'd like to share a story from a Transylvania County resident to illustrate how the affordable housing crisis is affecting people. My husband died during the COVID-19 pandemic, and I couldn't keep up with our mortgage on my own. I ended up losing my home and had to live out of my car. I never imagined this would happen to me. I've accessed services from nonprofits where I previously volunteered. It's been incredibly humbling. I'm working and I'm staying with friends, but there's nowhere here for me to live independently in my own community. We know from the city's housing study last year, one in four households in Transylvania County are cost burdened, and 106 families faced an eviction within the last year. Forty-five percent of renters struggle with housing costs, and despite recent efforts to increase housing availability, rental and home vacancy rates are below 1%. We need all types of housing in Brevard: workforce housing for teachers and other local employees, deeply affordable rentals, and permanent supportive housing for neighbors with disabilities. Investing in affordable housing is more cost-effective than managing the consequences of homelessness. Emergency health care, law enforcement, and social services significantly increase public expenditures. Children in stable housing environments show a better academic performance and lower rates of absenteeism. Investing in affordable housing contributes to the educational and long-term success of the next generation. Though many people support affordable housing in general, they raise objections when it's in their backyard. I've spent the last decade of my career working on this issue nationally before transitioning to local work, and I wanted to dispel some common concerns based on my experience and exposure to the national data and trends. Affordable homes do not dilute the market value of your personal investments. Adding affordable housing to a community does not lead to higher crimes or decreased safety. Data shows that well-planned affordable housing can incorporate traffic management solutions and minimize congestion. Green building practices and thoughtful planning ensure that affordable housing projects are environmentally sustainable. Affordable housing standards...
30 seconds, Ms. Bradshaw.
...ensure high-quality construction, contributing positively to the community's long-term health and aesthetics. As a teenager whose family moved into affordable housing after a crisis, I can personally speak to its importance in every community, and I invite anyone opposed to it near their homes to take a moment to reevaluate of the positive impact it can have for the future of Brevard.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Joe Kelly.
Good evening. My name is Joe Kelly. I live at 555 West Probarth Street. I'm here tonight to just express my support for the proposed Probarth Street Traffic Calming, which is on your fiscal year 2024 supplemental plan, which I believe is on today's agenda. I just want to remind the council that this issue is truly a safety issue, not only for the members and residents of Probarth Street, but also for the rest of the community, including cyclists, hikers, people on their way to use our Racket Mountain Reserve, which is a great community asset, also for students and family members and residents and people going to the Mountain Sun School, and also attending events and traveling to and from the Music Center. I'm here to support myself for the community and also to recognize other members of Probarth Street and the community also support this initiative tonight. Thank you also to the planning board and the efforts of the council so far to do a comprehensive evaluation of the situation and to get the support for this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Our next speaker is Linda Gallo.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo what Mr. Kelly said, and Linda Gallo, 671 Probarth. And just thank the council for considering this proactively instead of waiting for something tragic to happen before the action is taken.
Thank you, Ms. Gallo. Our next speaker is Monica Justko. Monica?
Hello, and thank you for allowing all of us to speak tonight. I want to address some concerns I have about the Downtown Master Plan Committee's proposal to you, to city council for public art, and I've got, I have concerns about it that I think are worthy of consideration. The plan is for a mural to honor a person who was born in Brevard and subsequently left to become rather famous with her profession. There's already a historical sign in her honor at Clemson Plaza, and there's serious consideration of a statue to be erected at Mary C Jenkins. I think that's terrific. But I also am very, very, I guess, loyal to the vast, extensive history that we have in Transylvania County of Brevard, since before we were a town, when people, parents, grandparents, children played, made music on front porch and the backyards. And we have a lot of musicians that have started in Brevard, and they're from different races. I think it would be worthwhile to consider some way to honor music, the history of music and the progression of music, in another situation than Clemson Plaza. I think that the hope that opportunities for the public, for public art to engage, I'm quoting, "with Brevard's citizenry, inform visitors, and foster a sense of belonging" that are suggested are worthwhile and desirable functions of that space. But I also submit that this proposal, as it is, to paint a mural on Clemson Plaza is misguided at best and will not realize those very achievable opportunities. I think it deserves more consideration so that the opportunities that are espoused there can be reached. And this is the third effort to do something at Clemson Plaza. I'd like you to do it right, and I appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Justko. Okay, that is everybody that signed up, with the exception of the three names that we move to the public hearing. All right. All right. Oh, we are on proclamations. I lost track there of what we were doing. All right, well, as always, the best thing I get to do as mayor is to proclaim and recognize people. And today we have a proclamation and I would like to ask Cliff Justice, our Public Works Supervisor, to come up and join me, Cliff. All right. And today we have a proclamation about National Public Works Week, which is May 19 through 25th for Administering Quality of Life for All. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Brevard. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, for engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Brevard to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas, the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Maureen Kowdlov, Mayor of the city of Brevard, do hereby designate the week of May 19 through 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all. And that's the end of the official proclamation, but before I let Cliff leave, I just want to go over a little bit of what exactly our public works department does, because they do an incredible amount of work in our city. Our city would not continue to operate without them. And for most of us, it's invisible. So I'm just going to read what some of the different divisions do, right? Correct me if, correct me if I get it wrong. First, we've got the sanitation division. Well, we all know what they do, right? They pick up our trash, our recycling, all the brush that we put out on the curbside and they do that week in and week out all the year. Then we also have vehicle maintenance. Oh, and I lucked out. Oh, the streets, wait, sorry, I lucked out the streets department here. They keep track of our, repair our streets and sidewalks. They mow. They do snow removal, which thank goodness this year we didn't really have to do, but last year we had plenty of work. They do street sweeping and they actually built the sidewalk on Oakdale Street, that new sidewalk that's completely built by our public works department. So our streets division stays pretty, pretty busy. They are always out there repairing that infrastructure. We have vehicle maintenance, which maintains the city vehicles and we actually are under contract with the county and we maintain a lot of county vehicles also. Then we have the water distribution system. How many miles of water mains do you think we have in Brevard? How many guys, how many, how many miles?
Eight thousand.
Well, you're almost right, Harvey. We have 86 miles of water mains. Eighty-six miles. And every one of those has to be maintained. And if one of them has a leak, it's got to be fixed immediately. So they maintain the water mains and they have booster stations and five water tank facilities that they maintain. Then we have the sewer lines. How many miles of sewer lines do you think we have?
Eighty-six.
Fifty-five.
We have 61, 61 miles of sewer lines. And those have to be maintained. That is a lot of miles of water and sewer lines. Okay. So, oh, and 17 pump stations that actually pumps the water. And you guys maintain all of these. And you know, if one of these breaks and it's 2:00 in the morning, they're out there at 2:00 in the morning repairing that sewer line for you until it's fixed. Then we have the building and grounds, where they maintain all of our buildings, they maintain our parks, our playgrounds, the sports complex, actually everything that we own are out there doing. So that is just a little bit about what our public works department is out there doing for all of you. And so when I say that this is the week when we want to recognize and thank them for their dedication and professionalism, we have a lot to really thank them for. So Cliff, with that, thank you to Public Works. You have the floor. And now we are going to move into our public hearings. Our first of three public hearings is on the proposed FY 2425 Budget and Ordinance. And I believe our city manager is going to open this.
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to ask Alex to pull up the PowerPoint there. And while he's doing that, I just want to thank council and staff and the public and everyone who's been involved in this process so far. And I hope that we can continue to have a healthy, enriched conversation about this over the next few weeks. On the screen, you'll see a QR code. If you scan that QR code with your mobile device, it'll take you to a webpage where you can find this, which is the comprehensive budget document, which contains all the detail that I won't be able to cover tonight, but I'll summarize. It also contains an addenda with some of the alternatives that the council offered at our last discussion about the budget. And it's got some other supplementary documents on there that can inform this conversation. And so I'll leave that up on the screen for another minute or so, for those who are interested in scanning it and following along. Just a quick review. My budget, which I said is published in this document, does the following. It funds three new full-time firefighters, allowing Brevard Fire Department to have at least two full-time firefighters on every shift. It funds the relocation of the Brevard Police Department to a new facility at 132 Commerce Street, a move designed to increase the effectiveness and morale of the police department by moving them out of their cramped and deteriorating space in the basement of City Hall. It creates the city's first dedicated stormwater fund, which is designed to focus resources on the maintenance and upgrade of our city's stormwater conveyance system. It endows the Housing Trust Fund with $198,000 additional dollars, bringing its total available balance to over a half million dollars. It increases employee compensation by 3.25% and budgets for a 4% contribution to all employees' 401Ks rather than the current up to 3% match. It maintains or enhances services and all other general fund functions. And in the public works realm, mayor, it combines water distribution and wastewater collections into a single unit, water sewer maintenance, and adds one full-time maintenance position to that unit so that we can take our maintenance that you just so eloquently talked about to the next level. It does this through the following revenue increases. A 2% property tax increase, which takes our mileage rate from 48 cents per $100 of valuation to 50 cents per $100 of valuation. That still puts us right in the middle of our peers. It proposes a $1 per month increase, so $12 per year, on residential and small commercial sanitation fees and a larger $80 a month increase in commercial dumpster collection fees. This latter increase is intended to close the gap between the cost of service, which is nearly $40 per collection, and its revenue, which at the moment is only $2.50 per collection. The new stormwater fund would be funded by a three-tiered impervious surface fee. And for the vast majority of residential properties and all commercial and other types of properties that have under 7,000 square feet of impervious surface, the fee would be $4 per month. I'm also recommending in my document that we continue on with the city's regular 4% increases to our utility consumption rate. So the water you use, I'm proposing we raise that rate 4% so that we can start saving money for large capital projects that we have on the horizon. And then finally, I'm recommending that we implement a new consumption-based, high-strength waste surcharge so that producers of high-strength wastewater contribute extra to the cost of treatment because their high-strength waste drives up the cost of treatment. And I think it's only fair that they bear more of the burden of those costs. When you list them all like that, it sounds like a lot, but as we reviewed during my last presentation, and as you can see, if you're following along, on pages 193 through 195 of your notebook, the cumulative effects are actually quite modest on most folks. There are a few outliers. And so I would refer you to those pages to study the impact of these fee increases. The other thing I want to draw your attention to, as I alluded to earlier, is the addendum that staff put together with the alternatives that council offered at the last meeting that I hope we can hear comments on and perhaps have some discussion on tonight. And if there are additional alternatives that the council would like to consider at tonight's meeting, we'll capture those and publish those in much the same way and have them available for you at our next meeting and the deliberation there. So that's all I have to say for now, mayor, and ready to hear public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I will officially open the public hearing. The public is invited, is asked to adhere to the following guidelines for the public hearing. Register with the city clerk by printing your name, address, and phone number on the sign-in sheet, which is here. When it is your turn, step to the podium in front of city council. State your name and address clearly. Be concise, avoid repetition, and limit your comments to five minutes or less. And I will give you a warning when you have 30 seconds left. Direct comments to the full council, not to an individual council member or to staff. This is a time to provide your comments, but not to ask questions. A public hearing is not an appropriate venue for a question-and-answer session. Designate a spokesperson for large groups and each person may speak once for a specific public hearing. I will call people up in the order they signed up. Our first speaker is Harvey Sankey.
I have to, my, my comments tonight are going to be related to a safety issue here. As you all know, the city manager prepares the budget for the council to review. He goes to every department, talks to every manager, and his staff also takes notes on what they need for the, for this fiscal year. This was reviewed by city council at a pub, public meeting, which I attended. Then they had another meeting, which indicated some recommended changes would like to be made. And apparently, some of the city council members here want to make an alternative change. City manager recommended $140,000 for the police department to replace two cars, two police cars, which is what they're supposed, which is what they're going to be doing, okay? The Estito Trail, he recommended $25,000. Some city council members, from my understanding, indicate they only want to replace one police car, which would be $70,000, and put it into the Estito Trail. So what it comes down to, the city council members, some of them, want to have the police department have a budget of $70,000 to replace two, to replace one car and $95,000 for the Estito Trail. As you know, the Estito Trail has been getting funds in fiscal year '23, they got $125,000, they got $82,000 in the next fiscal year, and this year, our city manager is recommending I found this alternative, this is a safety issue here. Some of the city council members want to take a car out, all right, of replacement. You've got a safety issue here.
Thirty seconds.
And this is a safety issue.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Mr. Sankey, I, you have two and a half more minutes. Sorry. Sorry. I confused. Give you an extra 10 seconds.
This is a major safety issue. The police department is supposed to protect all the residents here in Brevard, including businesses, all right? Without that additional replacement car, you could have a problem when an issue arise, okay? It's like the old sitcom, Car 54, Where Are You? And an issue arises, they're going to need all the cars that they can get. Where, where are you, Car 54? Well, that car's in, is, is, is out of water right now and it was one of the cars we were going to replace. So you have one less car and what's the driver going to do? Is he going to run to these issues? No, he's not. All right, so what I'm saying is, this is a need. This is a need for the police department, for our safety in Brevard. It's not a want. Also, in the strategic planning that was together, the city council brought together, there are seven goals in your strategic planning. Wilson went by those strategic goals when he brought this budget in. One of the strategic goals is community safety. That was the top priority. The seventh goal, the last one, was connect transportation network, which including the Estito Trail. So some city council members want to take goal seven and put it ahead of goal one. I have a problem with that. I think they should look, look this over and, and not make that change. We don't want to defund the police department, not in Brevard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sankey. Our next speaker is Rodney Lox.
Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. I did review the budget and it was very enlightening. It says to me, we can't keep doing business the way we've been doing. First, you want to raise the tax rate two cents to fund the full-time fire department. That's a good idea. Why? Because we need it. But you also need to negotiate with the county so that they can pay you their fair share. so that they can pay you their fair share. Second, you're willing to run the commercial dumpster collection service at a loss. You already know that it was 40 cents per load. Now you've got it down to $27.30 a load. But you're still running it at a loss. That's money that you're leaving on the table that can be used for the general fund. Third, speaking about leaving money on the table, you taxed the municipal service district. And then you turn around and you give them the money back. Maybe not all of it, but, all but $6,000. You can take that $171,000. The Easter Tole Trail, $25,000. The downtown planters, $20,000. The downtown master plan, $33,000. And offset the $264,000, and just add $15,000 from the fund balance. And you don't have to raise taxes or, as he said, take the car away from the police department. Raising the taxes by 4% doesn't solve your problem. It just highlights the fact that we have a wastewater treatment problem and a water sewer problem. The 4% increase was to be added to the waste, to the, to the water sewer capital fund to bring the total up to $369, $69,000. And then you would move the money to the wastewater, wastewater treatment fund so that you can jumpstart it. You can't solve your problem when you need $13 million over here and $65 million over here to pay for all the capital problems that we have for both of those systems. My suggestion is, you don't raise the wastewater to 4%. Leave the $171,000 in the water treat, water treatment fund and figure out a way to solve your wastewater treatment problem. Because you can't keep raising the rate 4% of time till you get to the millions of dollars that you need. And finally, lastly, fix the sidewalks and the streets, especially for us older people. If you want to be an age-friendly community, don't let us fall down and break our necks.
Thank you, Mr. Lox. All right, our next speaker is Ella Jones. Ms. Jones?
Good evening, Mayor Copeland. Also, council members. My name is Ella Jones, and I live at 86 McMen Avenue, Brevard. My concerns tonight is the budget. And more importantly, these particular areas. The property taxes was, is a main one. And the reason why I bring that up is because in the Rosenwall community, and I'm sure that there are concerns throughout the Brevard community, that if the taxes are raised, we have senior citizens who are on special incomes. Their budget is limited. When we raise the taxes, some have concerns about whether or not they will lose their properties because they are having difficulty paying those property taxes now. Moving along to the water and sewer. The water bills has skyrocketed. More importantly, I would talk personally about my own. I live alone. I had a water bill of $253. After having the lines checked, both by city and personal plumber to come by, there were no leaks without explanation. Then when I talk about sewer, on Washington Street Avenue, which is above me where I live, there are no sewage lines. And it's been like this for years. And I don't know if the people on McMen know that those sewer lines are coming down through the properties of the folks that live on McMen. Case in point, I have had sewage to come up in my yard at least three times. And I've had to get someone to come and check it out. City came and gave me the little droplets to put down in my commode. It did not reflect that it was coming from my sewage line, but from Washington. So that's, that's a concern. In our community, our senior citizens are living on this fixed income. And, and I was saying that they have concerns about this. So we want to live in a beautiful community all around Brevard. While we do this, the charge of $50, and I, and I just found out today that it may raise to 75, for them to come and pick up large amounts of garbage. If we are already having financial difficulties, how do we keep the city beautiful? If we set that stuff out on the road, it'll be sitting there until somebody can muster up enough money to pay for it. So that is a concern. And is it going up to $75? My question to you tonight is, is there any hope for tomorrow? Or is taxes, water, sewage going to continue to climb? And I want to be an advocate for those that don't have. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Our next speaker is Frankie Gordon. Ms. Gordon?
Good evening. Mayor, the councilor. I'm Reverend Frankie Gordon. I'm the Associate Pastor for New French Royal Baptist Church. I'm here on behalf of myself and others. I want to comment about, also add to what Sister Jones just got through talking about. You have many a senior citizen here that on fixed income. And that's all it is, fixed income. And it's very difficult for them today to pretty well pay the bills, the taxes, and living expenses that they are going through already. It's pretty high here in Brevard, I must add, after living in other places. The water bill, sewage, and all that is pretty expensive. And many of them can't, can't afford it as it is. So an increase would be devastating. And we are asking the mayor and the council to vote no to this new budget that is coming out right now because many cannot afford to pay it. Then I have another comment to say that you want to keep Brevard beautiful. But there are places in my neighborhood that have set stuff on the street that have been sitting there for three and four months because they have to pay extra money to have this picked up. Now with all this that we are paying already, why do we have to pay extra money to have stuff set up where we put stuff on the street? That should come within the budget of being picked up by the city, period. But anyway, it's set there. And I can, I can think some places that I've, I've located that have, stuff have been there, and it's still there today that should need to be picked up. So with this budget that's coming out, I would ask the city, the council, to vote no because you have people in this town that cannot afford this new budget. They're having trouble with what they are paying already. So to put a more burden on people, you taking a chance on people losing their property, and you having a chance of a very upset community. So I ask that you reconsider this budget and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Our next speaker is Rebecca Nguyen.
Good evening, everyone. Y'all act like you're tired or something. Good evening. How y'all doing? I'm Rebecca Nguyen. I live at 180 Duckworth Avenue. And I'm one of them senior citizens that she referring to that is on a fixed income. And there's also 491 of those here in Transylvania County. Okay, and then I just want to do this. I bring in $26,706 a year. Out of that, I paid $2,424 for wastewater. I paid $2,050 for taxes. I paid $13,200 for rent. I paid $2,400 for gas, $1,200 for lights, and I have $5,632 left. Out of that, I got to buy food, medication, pay for my internet, my phone, my car transportation, gas maintenance, and any other unexpected thing that comes up. Now to me, from my calculation, this is a plan for the rich to get richer and for the poor to get poor. We can't pay our taxes, so that means we're going to lose our home, our properties. And if we don't have someone to help us, we're going to become homeless. And that's already an issue here in Transylvania County. But I noticed you had something there for affordable houses and the taxes. Your affordable houses will not reach us. So what are you going to do? You got another problem. You got homeless people, nowhere to put them, and then you want to raise our taxes and everything. So I'm just asking that y'all find another way to cut back and, and, and make this budget affordable for those of us that have lived here all our lives.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you.
That is everyone that has signed up to speak on the budget. So I will officially close the public hearing. At this point, I will open discussion from council for any additional questions or comments per the manager's request. With that, we'll start with Mr. Daniel.
Okay, thank you. Well, I would, I'd like, I would like to address, as I have before, promises that were made in the past concerning the downtown master plan, housing, Estito Trail. We've raised taxes for those express purposes in the past. And we did that because we've had many numerous public input sessions throughout the city that provide direction that these are the projects that people want to see completed. And not funding these projects seems disingenuous to me. The grants that we've received for these projects are not 100%. They are partial grants, either 50-50 or 20-80. And without additional funding from the city, these projects will wither on the vine. The grants that we have received were because we had funds to contribute. And none of these projects are finished. I have a proposition that we fund the Estito Trail and the downtown master fund at $100,000 this year, each. And that we reduce the police car to one this year. My conversation with the police chief is that that would be acceptable. Not ideal, and not a safety issue. That's my conversation. Two would be a problem. I would suggest that we fund the one car from the fund balance. If the fund balance is to deal with emergencies and unexpected expenditures, then our need to move the police department should qualify for that, I would think. I also think we need to take a look at the fund balance as it exceeds our minimum percentage considerably. And if we need to raise that percentage, then that, we need to have that conversation. But I don't think we need to shortchange our projects without having that conversation. Also, although I'm in favor of adding three full-time firemen, I am not willing to take on the additional financial burden without a better understanding of the long-term implications in our relationship with the county.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I'll start by echoing what I said at the last meeting, which is that I'm also not in favor of the 2% tax increase this year. We've got a lot of needs in the budget. But I believe we, we, we have the necessary funds to, to move forward with those. And I agree with Mr. Daniel that the partnership that we're involved in with the county in funding the fire department is complex. And it is, there's no getting around it. That's not going away anytime soon. And for us to go out on our own, representing the city residents, and increase the funding for the fire department with no assurances from the county that, that they will help us with that, seems incredibly misguided, particularly when that is attached to a tax increase. A tax increase that, you know, led the, the headlines in the, in the, in the paper. To me, if, if, if we're going to do that, we need to have done our due diligence with our partner in the county before we make that decision. I'll also quibble a little bit with, with how some of the budget was, was put together. You know, in, in my mind, there's, there's ongoing expenses and there's one-time expenses. There's also expected expenses and there's unexpected expenses. You know, a major part of the budget this year that, that we're all sort of finding ourselves dancing around is the, the unexpected cost of moving the police department. And, you know, that is a, that is a safety need. And that is something that I think unanimously up here, we're all in favor of. But that is an unexpected cost. And within that unexpected cost, there are both one-time costs of upfitting the new space. There's also a lot of ongoing costs with the rent on the new building. So just that one expense, you know, gives you a little window into, into how complex some of these issues are. And I'll agree with, with Mr. Daniel on, on the, the fund balance. You know, mentioning the fund balance because in my mind, that is, we, we put that money away for those unexpected expenses. And then we should be moving forward quickly on, on funding those things through, through things like our fund balance. And then when the budget rolls around, we can work hard to build that fund balance back up. So that, you know, that's a, that's a big chunk of the budget here that we're having to, to deal with. But like I said in, in the beginning of my comments, I'm, I'm not going to be in favor of the property tax increase connected with the fire department. I think we need to have the negotiation with the county and a long-term plan for how that funding split look, you know, looks going forward. And then with, with the remaining budget, you know, the Estito Trail is a promise that we've made. Housing, addressing the housing issue is, is also a promise that we made just last year. And, you know, it, it, it doesn't sit well with me that we're already taking a step back from the housing fund. It also doesn't sit well with me that we're 25 years into a project in the Estito Trail, and we're talking about reducing our contribution to that to the point where, you know, progress is going to be stalled out even further. And downtown master plan funding, you could say the same for that. So, you know, I think... Like I said, I think we can move some things around. You know, I would be in favor of asking the police department to get by with the one vehicle in the next year and using some of those funds to maintain, as best we can, the funding for some of these ongoing projects that we have. And I look forward to having those discussions as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right, Mr. Morrow?
Thank you. As I told Mr. Looby last week, I really like this budget because he covers so many things, and it's complex. And the fact that I said before that with respect to the fire department, I don't think we have a choice. We need to ensure that our firemen meet OSHA requirements. And we need those extra folks to do that. So safety is an issue there. I also believe that the police department deserves their own two vehicles and a schedule that saves us down the road respective to the Estito Trail. We know in our budget that we have $352,467 of balance in that fund, in the multi-use fund. And in addition to that, we have $786,062 that has not been spent of a $1.5 million budget. Included in that, so we're spending, as I said last time, more than a penny. More than a penny. Just this year alone, we'll spend $345,788 at Country Club. If you all remember, we just improved that intersection connecting Galmore to the high school. We're going to spend $310,000 on the Davidson River pedestrian bridge. It's going to be delivered next week, next month. So we are spending money. And to worry about... I don't think we need the $25,000, to tell you the truth. I think this is a great year where the budgets that were set in 2022 and 2023, we're still working on projects. And the fact that we're getting the over $500,000s from NC DOT to complete Tannery North this year complements what the Public Works did. You heard about that, all the work they do. But they completed Tannery South this year. So a lot of good things going on, but I commend the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Mr. Wise?
Thank you. Couple of things. I want to thank the public for coming out and speaking to us. I've said this many times before. I cannot stress how important that is to help us make decisions. Definitely want to thank the staff because this has been a tough project for someone who hasn't done it before. So thank you for that. And I also want to especially thank Chief Cooper and Chief Jordan, who helped me kind of understand some of our real-world needs and making some very hard decisions moving forward. First and foremost, after talking to Chief Cooper, I cannot support a two-cent property tax raise for firemen for many of the reasons Mr. Baker pointed out. I went to the county budget meeting last week, which was really great. And they had brought up concerns with the overall fire departments and especially with the fit of Brevard having to handle a very rural district like Sullivan 2. And I think there are places in that contract for us to discuss about what works and what doesn't moving forward. And it's hard to say that we're responsible for medical first response, fire in the city and the rural district, where we have to buy and maintain special equipment without any room to kind of open a discussion with the county. On top of a two-cent property tax increase that we've heard is going to be very burdensome, I think we have other increases in this budget that we have to have and are only ways for us to move forward. But we don't need to also add a two-cent tax, property tax, on top of that. And I feel comfortable saying that after having conversations with our head of departments. As for the police car, Chief Jordan also and I had a good conversation about this. And I agree that we need to have one car right now. And I think that is important moving forward for the safety of our community. We did have a number of unexpected expenses by having to move the police department out of their current location. We all agree that was absolutely critical for the health, morale, and safety of our police officers. And I think I can speak for everyone to say that those guys are critical to us. However, that did place a burden upon us. And we can find a way to move forward with just one car. Third, I also agree that we need to take a look at our fund balance. I know that we are over our kind of minimal percentage. I don't know what the magic number there is. But I do think this might be a great time to look at that because we did... I wasn't on the council when this happened, but we did make a promise to people in previous years on our budget to fund certain projects. Some of these projects have been around for more than 20 years. And I think as a new member of the city council, I have to honor those decisions when I take them as critical decisions, especially with things like housing, downtown master plan. These are promises we made after numerous public input sessions with our public. So ultimately, I think we're very close to getting there. I think the 2% property tax increase is a really big one that we can not place upon our public right now and renegotiate and talk to the county and look what our options are. Thank you.
Ms. Holder?
Good evening, everyone. And thank you all for being here today and for your comments and your interest in taking time out of your busy schedules to come in and be here. I kind of liked the Lox budget. It was interesting. But it also gave me the inspiration to look at this a little bit deeper and a little bit harder. And I'm sorry I didn't do that before. Of course, I did with this report. And on the day that we were in the budget session, I said then how much housing is important to me, how much I did not want to raise rates and taxes in four different areas, rates in three areas, taxes in another area. So there's four areas of increases. I too am against raising the taxes by 2%. And I also agree that we need to negotiate more with the county before we hire three more or two more fire personnel. And so I think that is possible. And perhaps they see, are starting to see, as we are starting to see, that that conversation, that negotiation, needs to happen. I also asked in the budget meeting that there had been a new treatment cost that we're using now, and that treatment cost is down. And so my question tonight is, when will we know whether it's going to continue with us with the experiment that we've been doing? When will the decision be made that we can use that permanently? And then how will that spill over into the public as far as that cost decrease? And regarding the police department and two cars, I too talked with Chief Jordan, and he was very helpful in answering my questions. I like having protection and knowing that it's there. If we can manage with one car, that would be great, especially since, as Wise said, that we were having to endure the cost of moving into Commerce Place. That cost won't be there next year. And so we could use that to buy the car next year. I don't want to, however, raise taxes next year because we're saying we've got to buy three cars this year instead of two. So can we just pick up and get one car this year and then pick up the schedule next year to get two from that point? As far as if we decrease by one car, I am not in a position to support taking the funds to Estito Trail. I'm not against the trail. It's just that I'm struggling with taking that money, putting it into the trail, where we have housing crisis and we have people who are homeless. And it about brings me to tears about driving by people or walking by people on a trail who don't have a home. I just can't put my head around that, and I don't know how we can do that. So if we took money out of Estito, I mean, took money out of the police department by getting one car, I would say put it in housing or put it in something that would help to support our homeless community, our houseless community, but not to put it on the trail. Yes, it's a 20-year project, but we've got a... Something that involves people who don't know where they're going to sleep at night. I have watched a woman who has been living in the woods across the street from my house go from this place one week, this place the next week, this place the next week with her tent. It's hard to watch. It's hard to watch. And so, you know, to think about that, and, you know, they may have to end up staying on the trail. I can't do it. I'm sorry. So if we could wait to get the car next year and use those funds to help with our housing and to help with our houseless community, I would be in full support of that. If we can't do that, then go ahead and get the two cars.
Thank you, Ms. Holder. All right, Mr. Manager, do you have enough guidance now from council?
Yes, ma'am. We'll take these additional alternatives and calculate the various trade-offs and put them in the addendum document and send that out for you to study. I would like to make a couple of comments on the fund balance proposal, which, of course, is up to you all to do. But I'd like to offer some advice on that particular proposal. You know, all the signs out there are pointing to an economic slowdown. And maintaining a healthy fund balance may help our organization have a soft landing should the economy tip into a recession. By dialing back on our voluntary spending and not tapping into our fund balance, we may help save our core services from cuts in the future. On the flip side, if the economy stays level or starts to improve, showing discipline and not using fund balance to fund what essentially is a recurring expense, a regular annual endowment to downtown master plan and Estito Trail, makes it easier for us to borrow for future capital projects. When you avoid tapping into your fund balance to balance your budget, the LGC looks at you better, and the banks that extend you credit for your capital projects deem you to be more creditworthy. And then finally, you know, it's called a rainy day fund for a reason. There are literally rainy days. You know, before the mill in Canton closed, they were already dealing with a budget crunch because they were recovering from a flood. And just this past week or so, my previous town had a tornado come through. And in both cases, they're going to have to dip into their reserves to pay for recoveries from those two natural disasters. And so I've got some information here about the balance of our fund balance. And indeed, we have $1.4 million over our 25% minimum threshold for a total of $3.6 million. That puts us at 41.1%. But, folks, that's low. If you compared us to other cities like us, we would be in the bottom half. It's not concerningly low. It's not low in the sense that the LGC is going to look at us and wag their finger. But it's low enough that it puts us in another category compared to our peers. The closest one we know about that we're most familiar with due to some staff history there is Black Mountain, and theirs is 56. And it's not considered particularly high either. And so I would strongly discourage you. I'll write up that option, and I'll put it on the list of alternatives. But I would strongly discourage you from looking to the fund balance to balance the budget.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Daniel.
So we set our minimum fund balance at 25%. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Who determines that our fund balance is 41%? That's not a policy decision?
No, sir. That's just what it happens to sit at at the moment.
Because we're not spending the money that's above the 25% that's not being budgeted.
Correct.
So you're making that decision.
Well, I'm giving my advice that I think 41% is adequate, and it probably should be higher. If I were here when that policy was set, I would have recommended much higher than 25%.
I just want to be clear on that. And I would also suggest that my proposal of $70,000 is a drop in the bucket to $1.4 million. I don't think that really affects our fund balance that much. But anyway, that's my suggestion. And I would also like to say that I would not do that, tap into the fund balance lightly. I feel like if we're in a financially tight place here, which it sounds, it looks like to me we are, it seems appropriate that that small amount of money could be taken from the fund balance to alleviate some of our immediate needs without really jeopardizing that number.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dario. All right, with that, we have finished our first public hearing, and we will take a 10-minute break. With that, we have finished our first public hearing, and we will take a 10-minute break. Gentlemen?
Understood.
Thank you. Okay, there you go. All right. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing on the ordinance voluntary contiguous annexation Pisgah Hospitality LLC, the intersection of Lambs Creek Road and US Highway 64. And I believe Mr. Aaron Bland, our deputy planning director, will be presenting.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as you said, we have a request for contiguous annexation from Pisgah Hospitality for multiple parcels located near the intersection of Asheville Highway and Lambs Creek Road. I'll try to bring up a map. The subject properties are within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction currently and adjacent to the existing corporate limits and other properties that are in the corporate limits owned by Pisgah Hospitality. And they are wanting to annex the rest of their properties in, so their entire project site is inside the city limits and can have full city services. They are proposing a vacation rental development called the Station at Brevard, and it will have a lodge, different cabin rental units, restaurant, and different things like that. The service delivery impacts are estimated to be minimal, given that the site is already in our ETJ and fire district, receiving almost all city services already, and the others are nearby. The financial impacts are estimated to be a net positive for the city. You do have an attachment. Trying to estimate the breakdown of those financial impacts. I'm happy to go over that if you have any questions. Planning Board discussed this request at their April 23 meeting and unanimously recommended approval. Tonight, this is just for public hearing purposes, so no actions requested at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions or talk about the location of the property. We also have the applicants here as well if they would like to add anything.
Okay. I will, at this point, officially open the public hearing. As no members of the public signed up to speak, I will officially close the public hearing, and I will open it for any questions that council might have. Mr.?
Madam Mayor, you may want to see if the applicant wants to input at the public hearing so that they would be available for questions.
Okay.
I don't know if the applicant wanted to speak. I just noted that Mr. Bland said they were here.
Happy to speak if you'd like. I don't have anything specific to add.
All right.
All right. Well, so if council has questions, then I'll call on you to answer if needed. Thank you. All right. Mr. Wise?
I don't have any questions.
Ms. Holder?
I don't besides tell me where it is again?
So it's at the intersection of Asheville Highway and Lambs Creek Road.
And what? I'm sorry.
It's kind of near Morris Road off Asheville Highway, near the Twin Dragons Restaurant on that side of the highway.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. And we're speaking about not a residence but a business?
Correct. Yes, a commercial venture.
Mr. Morrow?
Dr. Holder, it's where the billboards used to be.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay. Remember?
No.
I do. I remember.
I wasn't here. I wasn't here yet. I'm still a baby.
Anyway, no, I think it's a wonderful project and like to see it going forward.
Mr. Baker?
Yep. Just a quick question. Am I correct that some of these are already within the city limits? Or some of them are not?
Some of their property is.
Okay. I was just curious which are already in?
So I don't know if you can see this kind of arcing dotted line on the plat here. That's the current city limits.
Okay.
So the stuff up against the highway is already in.
Right.
And then everything behind those parcels is what they're requesting.
Okay. That's all.
Mr. Daniel?
I have no questions.
Okay. All right. Well, then we will move on. So much for this public hearing. Thank you, gentlemen. There were no questions for you. All right. Our third public hearing are the proposed amendments to the City of Brevard Unified Development Ordinance, Chapters 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 12, 13, 14, 16, 17, and 19, group developments and subdivision regulations. And our senior planner, Emily Brewer, is going to present. Emily?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, so I do have a very large text amendment for you today. I'm really excited to bring it to you all. It's been, what, eight months in the making? So it's been a big undertaking that we've taken, both as staff and with the support of Planning Board, and so we're very excited to bring it before you today. So this is a staff-initiated text amendment that resolves a lot of different challenges that we've faced with our subdivision regulations. And that's how this started, just with subdivisions. The goal of subdivision regulations are to provide for orderly growth and development in the city and our ETJ, protect and enhance property ownership and land values, maintain conditions essential to public health, safety, and welfare, facilitate adequate provision of public services, and facilitate the re-subdivision of larger tracts so that there can be smaller parcels of land for development. That's how we started. But in this process, we really started looking at how do we want the city to develop? And we turn to our comprehensive land use plan in order to do that. And so here's just an example I'll walk you through briefly. Let's say that a business owner wants to add another building to this lot. Could be an expansion of their business, could be a new business. Do we want them to subdivide, or do we want to allow more than one principal building on that site? And when we think about that, a subdivision means that you are splitting up this piece of land into additional lots. Both lots must meet the minimum road frontage requirements. Both lots must meet setbacks and have their individual parking areas, driveways, open space requirements, et cetera, et cetera, on individual parcels unless there's an agreement. But what we're looking at right now is this. But a group development is something different. A group development is when you're allowed to have more than one principal building on a property, which is appropriate in some circumstances. Some benefits and some different things to think about with group developments is that it minimizes the number of driveways, can have a shared or more efficient parking design or any other infrastructure improvement, can accommodate different types of site layouts, accounting for different site constraints and topography, and then it meets the overall setback requirements, and then we would have some additional separation requirements between those buildings and some of the other elements. So when thinking about an appropriate development pattern per our comprehensive land use plan, we look at these two elements. The easy way to think about it is that a group development is one parcel or a grouping of parcels that can often accommodate higher-density projects with shared development requirements. You know, sometimes these are for businesses or developments that require multiple principal buildings. And the subdivision is it's a large parcel or a different parcel being split into smaller pieces. So sometimes this is really important for large parcels that are not fully utilized. A lot of times, in order to subdivide, there needs to be additional infrastructure that is built in order to meet the development requirements, such as road frontage, and this can be more appropriate for lower-density residential development versus a group development. And so what we're proposing today and what we've been working on for eight months or so has been amendments to both of these different types of development. We're looking at our development pattern as a city. And as I mentioned, this comes directly from the Building Brevard 2030 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. I've only picked a couple here that I think are most relevant, but a lot of our plan addresses the development pattern. So first and foremost, goal number two, encourage a development pattern that respects Brevard's sense of place and prioritizes livable communities. Some of the ways that we can do that and that are highlighted in the plan are to identify as different areas that are best positioned to accommodate that future growth, to look at areas where we can facilitate infill development, but also revitalization of developed parcels. So that's another reason why we're looking at group developments. And then also enhancing communication of all of our land use planning efforts, but also, more specifically, what we're looking at in this is the approvals and the processes that we go through in order to approve a subdivision or a development. So those are the main things, but like I said, it's very much all over that plan. So this initially started in October of last year, where we worked with Planning Board to introduce our subdivision regulations and the challenges that we've been having and some of the opportunities for improvement. We worked really hard on our subdivision effort, but then we kind of came to that realization that I described before about the difference between a group development and subdivision for our development patterns. And so in January, we presented a revised framework for what this text amendment was going to look like. In February, the board, the Planning Board, reviewed a draft of the group development regulations, so just that section. In March, they reviewed the entire text amendment and unanimously recommended in favor. And then in April, we brought a couple additional changes that were also recommended in favor of adoption. So your staff report has a lot of information in it. I hope that it was helpful in understanding. I'm going to walk through the first six, which I believe are the most important for us to talk through, so I'll just get going. As I said, group development regulations. In our ordinance right now, we don't really have clear group development regulations. It's not specific for this type of development. And so when we look at putting two or more principal buildings on a single parcel or a grouping thereof, we have a lot of other considerations that are now proposed as part of this amendment. of this amendment, use limitations, emergency access, road width, the connection between the different buildings and parking lots, the types of ownership model, there's some different requirements with what is recorded, required to be recorded at the Register of Deeds, depending on the ownership, and other things like setbacks, shared open space, similar items. So one of the biggest changes is establishing a group development regulation section and establishing different types of group developments that have different permissions and standards. This is an excerpt of the chart that is now in the proposed text amendment that looks at the difference between residential and non-residential group developments, and we also have some additional types of group developments that have, that are allowed in certain zoning districts and have specific standards among them. The one I'm going to focus on right now, and the one that we as planning staff are most excited about, is this cluster home development. So cluster home development, some other cities refer to it as cottage courts or pocket neighborhoods or something like that, is a different type of missing middle housing that we're introducing as part of this amendment. This is a small lot residential development where multiple dwellings are clustered around a common open space. It's designed as a cohesive whole and that the shared common areas, that the common areas are maintained in shared stewardship. This can be operated as a rental property under a single ownership or with individual lots that are sold with a shared ownership of those common areas and infrastructures, as I've said. This presents a lot of opportunities as a different type of missing middle housing. It creates diverse housing options that we're really excited to be adding. It allows for denser development that is at a community scale. So as part of this, we're proposing that the use limitations be only single family up to quadruplexes, so one, two, three, and four unit buildings. So this is really meant to be a smaller scale that has more of that community feel, it's just about the placement on that site and sharing of infrastructure. And as I said, more efficient and creative uses of, uses of space, and it really helps with peculiar parcels. Some parcels are large and don't have adequate road frontage to be able to subdivide into long skinny lots, you know? This example on the screen of the diagram would mean that you would have to separate all of those different lots out, those seven different lots, into skinny pieces of land. That might not have been possible based on the dimensions of the site. And so this can allow for some denser development that still maintains that, that community So that is one of the things that we're most excited about, and I look forward to a discussion about that afterwards. I want to talk about a different type of group development regulation, the location of parking in group developments. So as part of this, as permitting more than one building on a lot, we are allowing for some denser development and more creative uses of space. Section 10.7 of our UDO states that off-street parking shall be permitted, shall only be permitted, excuse me, I keep saying it wrong, shall not be permitted between any principal structure and the street upon which such structure fronts. This amendment was passed in 2021 in response to a growing concern that the placement of parking for different developments were hindering the view along the major thoroughfares of Brevard. At the time, this section did not consider the placement of more than one principal structure on a lot or any other kind of peculiar or unique lot configurations that might be required with some of these irregular lots. The proposed amendment before you states that if parking is located between a principal building and the street in, in a group development, no more than 40% of the street frontage may be occupied by parking. The goal of this is to allow for some of the buildings, when it's appropriate, to be placed behind parking, but to make sure that the primary view of pedestrians, of vehicles, of anybody traveling along our major thoroughfares and the frontage of these developments would not, the primary view would not be parking in this scenario. We've also added, a really important caveat here, is that the administrator has the authority to require additional landscaping buffers and screening to further obstruct the parking areas. That is an important distinction as well. We know that this is a variation to the way that the location of parking has been thought of in the past, and so we had a little bit of a work session, a back and forth with Planning Ford, Planning Board, excuse me, and this was carefully considered before the recommended 40-60 split that you see on the screen. So these are some illustrations that we've included in your packet and in the text amendment, looking at, when you're traveling along the, the street right of way, the frontage of the lot, what percentage of that frontage would be obstructed by parking? And so that's what we're looking at here. In all of these circumstances, the administrator would have the authority to require additional landscaping, buffering, placement of other things in order to minimize the impact, but it does allow for some more creative uses of space and allows, or, excuse me, more efficient uses of space and is able to accommodate some, some more peculiar lots and topographic challenges that might exist as a result of, of putting more than one lot on a structure, on a parcel. So with that, I'm going to turn to subdivisions. Staff revised the definitions for exempt minor and major subdivisions, really in, in an effort to clarify the processes and the submittal requirements. Exempt subdivisions are defined by state statutes, so we've got that covered. Minor subdivisions and major subdivisions are something that we tweaked. So state statutes allows for municipalities to have expedited review for different types of subdivision classes, and so that's where we get the minor versus major. In practice, the real difference is that major subdivisions are required to go before the technical review committee, which is comprised of staff members, both at the city and the county level, public works, water, wastewater, planning, police, fire, et cetera, to review a plan. And then they must submit a preliminary plat, which, once it gets approval, they then have to install or guarantee the required improvements before the final subdivision approval. So that is the major, major difference, that it has to go to the technical review committee and that the improvements, any infrastructure, needs to be installed or guaranteed before it can be approved. So, we've revised the definitions of minor and major subdivisions so that the infrastructure requirements become the defining feature, excuse me, the defining factor that requires them to go through that more rigorous review process. Minor subdivisions, which have that expedited review, is now anything that creates less than eight lots and doesn't create any new public infrastructure. That eight lot defining point aligns with everything else in our ordinance. That's when street trees are required, that's when you have to be going through all these other things. And so we're trying to make that distinction of, of minor versus major being when infrastructure is involved and you need to have that additional review. Okay, variances to subdivision regulations. Currently, as you could see by the number of chapters that I touched, the subdivision regulations are really spread throughout our unified development ordinance. Not only does this make this very difficult to administer, but it also creates some regulatory issues in other areas of our ordinance. North Carolina general statutes states that the Board of Adjustment is allowed to grant variances to a municipality's zoning regulation. Any other land use or development regulations, which would include subdivision, may be varied if the authority is given as part of the ordinance. This is a really important distinction. As I previously, previously said, our subdivision regulations are important for maintaining health, safety, welfare, provision of services, all those different types of really important things, and as a result, many of our subdivision standards shouldn't be varied because they're considered a minimum for you to be able to, to ensure that health, safety, and welfare. But because they are so intertwined with our zoning regulations in our ordinance, the attorney to the Board of Adjustment has advised us that any lot or subdivision regulation is eligible for a variance because they're so intertwined. The proposed amendments that we have before you separate out the subdivision regulations from the zoning standards by explicitly separating it into Chapter 4 Lot and Subdivision Requirements, and establishes some very limited variance authority. The variance authority for this really is limited to rezoning, re-subdivision, so it's the frequency at which you can subdivide. That is the only thing, as it stands right now, that is allowed to be varied as part of this proposed change. So this is maybe not the most exciting change, but it's a really important one for us to be able to function and be able to have the Board of Adjustment making variances to our zoning regulations instead of our subdivision. The last one I want to talk about right now is the subdivision approval process. This is a very interesting case. Subdivision approval, per state law, is a ministerial act, which means that a plat is required to be approved if it meets the requirements. We have to approve it if it checks all the boxes. Now that can be done either in an administrative capacity or a quasi-judicial capacity, and it depends entirely on the content of the regulations. So, if the regulations themselves are clear and objective standards that can be implemented by checking the box, yes, you meet this, yes, you meet this, yes, you meet this, then that is deemed administrative and can be done ministerially at the staff level. If they require some level of judgment based on evidence, if you say, if one of the requirements was that you don't overburden the roads, you would have to provide evidence that you don't, that the subdivision doesn't overburden the roads. That requires some level of discretion based on evidence and would mean it's quasi-judicial in nature. It can never be legislative or purely discretionary per state law. And the important distinction here is that it's even if that decision is made by city council. In our ordinance right now, major subdivisions are required to go before city council, but city council can only make a ministerial act based on the quasi-judicial standards. Interestingly enough, this point was proven in Guilford Financial versus the City of Brevard in 2003, where a subdivision went before, before you all, before council at the time, and they did not follow, follow proper quasi-judicial procedures and denied the subdivision without sufficient evidence, and it was subsequently overturned by the courts. So, we have removed that entirely from, from this. Our proposed amendments are entirely administrative. We've done our very, very best, we've reviewed it with, with tons of people to make sure that we are in fact administrative and not quasi-judicial in nature. That means that it would be ministerial, we are checking the boxes, and it can be done at the staff level instead of quasi-judicial procedures, whether that be city council or Board of Adjustment or whomever. So with that, I will, thank you for the time and for, for bearing with me. While I go through all of this, I'm more than happy, as always, to answer any questions. I know this is a lot, I'm more than happy to, and I'm very excited to be bringing it before you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. And since this is a public hearing, I will officially open the public hearing. No members of the public sign to speak on the hearing, so I will officially close the public hearing portion of this, and I will open this up to any questions or discussion from council. Mr. Morrow?
The 2003 decision was interesting, and I was on council then and voted against this, this Laurel Village proposal because they were going to, they did end up building it on a nine-foot road for their public access, and they, it, it was okay because not many people had a car in the development, as it turned out. But anyway, so, yep. It did, it, and, and this city manager and city planner all, all said, you got to approve this, you got to approve this. And, and dumb me, I said, no, we don't have to.
Ms. Holder?
So the case that you mentioned, it was overturned by Superior Court, correct?
Correct.
So I was just wondering why, did the city miss something, or, no?
We just had a majority of council who decided it was not a safe environment for the residents on a nine-foot road.
And they overturned it just?
Right.
Okay.
If you, if you go down Morningside Drive, you'll see what I'm talking about.
Okay. What happens in a situation where the road may be overburdened? Whose, whose responsibility is that?
So that is not something that we're including as part of this because it would make it quasi-judicial. So we have instead turned to the technical review committee, which is all of our staff members that are going to, that, for a major subdivision, excuse me, oh, there we go. Anytime that new public infrastructure is required, as part of a ma, it would become a major subdivision, which would be required to go before the technical review committee, they would have to review it for safety and welfare and provide comments before we're able to approve anything. So we're adding this step more at the staff level, more at the expert level versus having it be a quasi-judicial hearing. Okay. As a result.
All right, thank you.
And we should have listened to staff.
Anything else, Ms. Holder? Pardon? Any other questions?
No, and thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Wise?
Thanks for the presentation as well. I love some planning, so this is pretty exciting stuff. Roast geeks, I know, this is the best thing of the night. But I will say, I've been out of town for the past week, so I didn't get to dive into this as much as I wanted to, just, it's so juicy, but I do want to say that the idea of group developments and cluster developments are going to be really important because of our land issues, and this is a really exciting step to help get some density into our city, so it's, it's great to see this happen. I also really love the, the way we're thinking about this as a framework, which is going to allow us some flexibility to kind of move a little bit for some special cases, and I think that's also going to be really important because we have very limited land and that land's weird, and we're going to have to find ways to kind of move around it. So this is a really great first step, and I will, I promise I will dive into it, but it's a really great first step in identifying some of these key issues that our city specifically has, so thanks to planning for getting that done. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Daniel?
Yeah, wow. This was a lot. Actually, I was, got pretty far into it and I was kind of getting a gist of it, and I said, I think I'll just let Emily explain it. Thank you for that. Thank you for the presentation, and yes, cluster homes, this is something that, so it needs to be addressed. But if you would, go to page 13, to the next page. I thought, is that the one, I thought that was the one that had the...
The diagrams?
Yeah, that one. 14, yeah. My, my only concern is the parking and exposure. The, so the one on the left is not, doesn't kind of fit my idea of what we would hope for, and I think there was a comment of, there would be barriers or visual, where, where is appropriate, but that wasn't in the wording of the, the where it's appropriate part, it was just, so I, I have a concern about that. I mean, the one on the right is, well, I, I won't have an answer, so I can't really go any further than that, but that's my concern is parking. That's all.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I guess I'll pick up right there too, because unsurprisingly, I had, I had a question on the off-street parking as well, and I guess I'll just challenge you to think of a scenario when... And I guess I'll just challenge you to think of a scenario when a developer might not like our current off-street parking rules and might devise a way to create a group development in order to build the parking to sort of skirt those rules. And I wonder if Planning Board and planning staff discuss that and if there are any protections against that happening.
Well, I'll just start by saying, I couldn't point to it at this exact moment, but there is a place in our ordinance that says if you're willfully skirting the ordinance, that is something that's not allowed. So there is at least a little bit of protection there. In terms of group development and the location of parking for off-street parking, this was something we went back and forth on quite a bit. We've actually had a number of Board of Adjustment variances on this exact thing for group developments. When it comes to a group development and all of the requirements for these larger-scale projects, and as Councilmember Wise said, we've got some weird land left, it becomes something that comes up more frequently than you would think. We most recently just had one for an affordable housing project that was not able to, would not have been able to move forward had they not received that variance because of the placement of the parking and the topographic challenges on that site. So understanding that group developments are very unique and are a different way for us to be able to use our space was how this started, how this came up. We did go over at great length the percentages, percentage breakdown with Planning Board before deciding on the 40% parking, 60% not parking, and adding in that additional buffer requirement. It could certainly be stronger if that is something that council wanted to do. This was our attempt at addressing some of the challenges that we've seen time and time again related to group developments.
And then on the types of subdivision section?
Yes.
The minor subdivisions which get the expedited review, and the wording is, doesn't involve the creation of public infrastructure, and I'm assuming that includes the extension of public infrastructure as well, right? I mean, it's not just creation of a new road.
Well, if it's, if it's on, if it's like, it's really if infrastructure is required as part of the developers.
Okay.
So you bringing the sewer line from the road to your property is not considered the creation of new public infrastructure, but having to create a new road for public access, or when you're in, when you create eight lots and you're required to have street trees and sidewalk and those kind of elements, then you would have to go through that additional review for the Technical Review Committee to review all of that and have the infrastructure, the most important part, in my opinion, is that the infrastructure has to be installed or guaranteed prior to approval, which means you have to, that the developer, the property owner who's subdividing the land, needs to either build it or put a bond up to make sure that it gets built. And so that becomes the most important part and really why we used that eight lots as the trigger, because that's when those improvements, many of those improvements are triggered on our ordinance.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'll just say, echo some of what was already said and say, this is a lot, obviously. I'm shocked, frankly, that nobody from the public wanted to comment on this.
Yeah, me, too.
And hopefully, everybody will be studying up for when it comes back next time. And I certainly will, you know, I think I'm going to need a little bit more time to dive into this. But I do want to commend staff. I know that, you know, this is a part of an effort, a longer effort, to really look at our rules and make sure that we are balancing both, you know, the type of development that we want to see and some restrictions that might be in place to ensure that we see that type of development, but also leave them open enough and flexible enough that we can utilize, I'll, I guess I'll say the term again, some of the weird land that we have. I think you've created something there, Councilman Wise, and, but yeah, that is a challenge that we certainly have, and, you know, it goes directly to affordability as well. If we're not able to utilize our land for building housing to its fullest potential, then we will continue to have affordability issues. So I know the staff has that in mind when they're looking at these, so thank you for working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. I think we're done with this public hearing, and we will move on. Next is our consent and information. The following items are on the consent agenda. One, the tax settlement report of April 2024. Two, capital project closeout, Main Street water and sewer improvements. Three, City Council Parks Trails Recreation Committee minutes of February 21st, '24. Four, City Council Parks Trails and Recreation Committee minutes of April 24th, 2024. Five, City Council Downtown Master Plan Committee minutes, March 18th of 2024. And six, City Council Downtown Master Plan Committee minutes of April 10th, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to our unfinished business, we have one item, the proposed amendment to the City of Brevard Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 15 Board Rules. And Mr. Aaron Bland will present this.
Yes, I'm sorry, this is only one chapter being amended. So if you remember, excuse me, at your May 6 meeting, we had a public hearing for this proposed text amendment. It's a staff-initiated text amendment that would bring the roles of the Board of Adjustment and Planning Board into compliance with the new Land Use Statute 160D as state law. So just a reminder, the proposed amendment eliminates anything currently listed in the UDO for each of those boards that's not expressly authorized by the statutes. It ensures and makes clear each board's required duties as they appear in the statutes, and then lists the optional responsibilities that they actually engage in and eliminates others that they don't. And then it also amends the makeup of the Planning Board to switch an ETJ seat to a city seat to better proportionally represent our citizens in the city limits versus the ETJ. So as I said, you've already held a public hearing on this, and your options tonight are either adoption as written, adoption as revised by yourself, rejection, sending it back to Planning Board, or calling for additional public hearings.
Do I have a motion regarding the proposed amendment?
How moved we adopt this amendment?
Second.
All right. Any discussion, Mr. Daniel?
No, I have nothing.
Mr. Baker?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Morrow?
Nothing.
Ms. Holder?
No, nothing.
Mr. Wise?
Nothing.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment is passed. Moving on to new business. The first item is the approval of the FY24 Supplemental Spending Plan and Related Budget Project Amendments, and our city manager will present.
Yes, ma'am. And once again, I'll ask Alex to bring up the PowerPoint with the table on it. Down at the bottom, the last slide, please.
Is it that one?
Nope, all the way at the bottom. Yeah, that's the right PowerPoint, yeah. Going down. There we go. That's the one. Thank you, sir. Okay, as its name implies, this spending plan supplements the FY25 budget, and it essentially uses savings and other sources of FY24 funds to fund some projects and some priorities that we couldn't afford to put in FY25. And you can see, well, you can't see, I'm sorry, it's small, but I'll be happy to read the table if, for the sake of our visitors. The first line, City Hall reconfiguration to create some more office space for our growing staff, $40,000. Recommending that I fund that out of FY24 operational savings. There we go. Thank you, sir. 132 Commerce Street upfits, these are the one-time expenses that Councilmember Baker alluded to earlier. I recommend we use unobligated fund balance. Internal email upgrade, this is a keep-the-lights-on kind of expense. Our technology vendor has promised to drop us as a client if we don't upgrade our email server because we will be too risky for them to protect, and I recommend we spend FY24 operational savings on that. Farmers market contribution, so this is one I want to draw your attention to. In the FY25 budget, there won't be a farmers' market contribution. Instead, I'm recommending that we do that here in FY24. We've spoken with Leslie, who's on the board of the farmers' market, and she's agreed to this. I recommend that we take approximately $43,000 in cash from a fee in lieu paid by Pardee when they erected their temporary medical office trailer over there off Asheville Highway, and cash that in to make improvements to the downtown sidewalks that are part of the Heart of Brevard Walkability Study. And note that that can't be used for anything other than sidewalks. So it's kind of serendipitous that we had sidewalk money and sidewalk needs. Probarth Street traffic calming is next, $30,000 for phases one through three from FY24 operational savings. Norton Creek Stream Bank Phase Two, you all have already sort of loosely committed to this, but I'm asking you tonight to formally commit to this. $72,000 from unobligated fund balance to match a similar-sized grant from the state to extend the Norton Creek renovation over one more property and straighten out a bend in the creek that threatens to wash out and ruin our larger investment downstream. And then finally, $12,000 from the Multi-Use Path Reserve Fund to fund a study of trail-related betterments to R5800. So essentially, studying ways that we can better integrate the Estito Trail into the Asheville Highway improvements that are going to be made by NC DOT here in the years to come. And so I'm asking you all to approve this spending plan tonight, and if you pass the resolution that's included in your agenda, you'll simultaneously be passing all the appropriate budget and project amendments that are necessary to make this money available to spend, except for a few. Alex, if you'll scroll back up to the top. Those first three, I'm asking you for permission to move forward with those projects, but the actual budget amendments won't be on your agenda for approval until next month because we need to know a little bit more about the timing of those projects and when they're actually going to get done before we move the money around. But I'd still like for your permission to encumber that money and move forward with those three projects, along with the other five or six that are on the list there.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do I have a motion to approve the supplemental spending plan and the related budget project amendments?
To move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Open there for discussion. Mr. Morrow?
No discussion.
Ms. Holder?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Wise?
I feel like we spent a good amount of time on these issues during our budget retreat. This is more for you guys out here, and a couple of other discussions. I'm comfortable with these supplemental requests.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, just a quick question. On the Norton Creek Stream Bank, I know we've discussed this before, and I just had a question while I was reading through this, because it seems like a candidate for spending our, what will become our stormwater fund if we pass the recommended budget. And I'm curious whether, you know, those funds are needed now or whether there's any way that could wait until that stormwater fund is up and running and those funds could come from that. And it's an honest question.
Right, understood. Yeah, I think that it would be eligible, but the sooner we can get that money available, the sooner we can start the project and take the risk out of leaving it as is. And also, in the first year of the stormwater fund collections, I had planned on spending most of that money updating the engineering study, and so I don't know if we had actually considered spending that much money on a repair in the first year.
Well, it's just worth asking because I think we're in, you know, we're in budget season, and obviously, we've had a lot of discussions and things are tight. So we're looking at everything there here, and hopefully, the public can recognize that. And I just, I do want to call out that, you know, these are outside of the budget, but we're certainly considering them alongside of the budget, or at least I am. And that includes, you know, things like the outfit of 132 Commerce Street for the Police Department and some of these other things. I also wanted to call out something that I've said before with the fee in lieu on the sidewalk. And I want to commend the staff on the creativity there to use some of that funding for some badly-needed things downtown. And I just want to, again, encourage us to, I think that is a viable and important, really, strategy that the city can use going forward when, you know, it doesn't really make sense for a sidewalk to be built in the middle of nowhere, and there might be some needs in other places, either for repair or for a new sidewalk that would really connect citizens to an important place, like a school or a store. So I know it worked out this time, but I'm hoping that we can look at that in the future.
Sir.
All right, we have a motion, and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The supplemental spending plan and the amendments are approved. The second item of new business, the application for public art, the Moms Mabley mural in Clemson Plaza, and Mr. Paul Ray, our planning director, will present.
The Heart of Brevard has submitted a public art application for a mural to be painted on the brick wall at Clemson Plaza on the east side of the Coed Cinema. The building at 79 West Main Street is owned by the city. The request is to commission artist Scott Nurkin to paint a 15-foot by 20-foot wide, or 20-foot on the wall of Loretta Mary Aiken, better known as Moms Mabley, as part of the North Carolina Musician Mural Trail. As council knows, Loretta Aiken was born in Brevard in 1894 and was pioneering African-American comedian, actress, and singer, whose career spanned over five decades. She overcame significant challenges, including poverty, racial discrimination, and other things, but she became one of the most successful influential entertainers of her time. She broke barriers as one of the first female stand-up comedians to gain widespread recognition and paved the way for future generations of African-American performers. The mural was first discussed at the Downtown Master Plan Committee on March 18th and received a favorable recommendation from the Arts Advisory Committee on May 1st. It went back to the Downtown Master Plan Committee on May 8th, where the mural application received a favorable recommendation. No cost is expected to be incurred by the city, but if this application is approved, staff may seek funding from the WNC Community Enhancement Grant to help support the implementation of the project. In your packet is a resolution for council to consider, and also a short video to play of the artist and more information on the North Carolina Musician Trail.
Marrying music and art, I feel like this is like my life's work, like this is my mission. I'm trained as a musician, I'm trained as a muralist, and so I can use those things and do something that people can recognize and enjoy. If somebody sees that and they go, "Oh, I didn't know about that," or influences somebody or drives somebody to listen to somebody's music, it's just, it's kind of a perfect storm for me. I live in Chapel Hill, North Carolina. I am a professional mural painter. I mean, it's a pretty fascinating job. I get to meet new people from all walks of life every day, literally every day. I enjoy painting on a grand scale. It's really fun to figure it out and step back, and it's physical work. I've done it so long that the tedium of painting on a small scale is actually really hard for me now. About 10 years ago, one of my good friends is in this place called Pepper's Pizza, which is a famous pizza restaurant in Chapel Hill, and he needed a mural. So I came with the idea of, I knew that North Carolina, all these great musicians, so I did a silhouette of North Carolina, and then I painted individual portraits of the musicians and sort of placed them in their respective birthplaces. And then Pepper's closed down. We just kind of talked about doing these things, do murals of these guys. So that's kind of started, that was the genesis of it. The North Carolina Musician Murals Project is, the whole goal of it is to go to the towns and birthplaces of famous North Carolina musicians and commemorate them by putting an illustration of them in mural form on a wall. Trailblazers, you know, geniuses, Thelonious Monk, Nina Simone, John Coltrane, literally the top of the heap, Earl Scruggs, you know, all North Carolinians. One of the things that kind of, I could shake my head at, it's like I never learned about this stuff in North Carolina history in fourth grade. You know, I learned all about Sher Walter Raleigh, or, you know, the governor of North Carolina in the 60s or whatever, but I didn't know that, you know, George Clinton was from Kannapolis. Even with the Blind Boy Fuller mural, 90% of the people that walked up to me over the course of the time I was doing it would say, "Who is that and why is he being painted here?" And I'd tell them, and then I'd say, "He's from here," and they would, the look of shock and awe, like, "Really?" You know, and I love that, I feel like, that's amazing, because it's sort of like, "Yeah, he's just like you." And I constantly get people ask me, "Who's going to be the next one? Who's going to be the next one?" And I, a lot of times, I don't even know, but I can't wait to tell them. And I'm happy the state recognizes, this is a really important thing to do, is like bring some of these people out of the obscurity, because there's so many, we hit all the big ones, you know, people know Monk and Simone and Coltrane, but there's 20 others that are backup singers or sidemen. It only serves more of a purpose to big up North Carolina and its community and the people from this area to keep recognizing all these musicians.
So the applicant, Nicole Bentley from the Heart of Brevard, she's here to answer any questions, too, you might have about her application.
Ms. Bentley, did you want to present anything before I ask for a motion?
Um, no. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution granting permission for a mural?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll open it up for questions and comments. Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I think, I think this is wonderful. You know, Clemson Plaza's been the subject of a lot of discussion, so I don't want to draw that out anymore, but I think this is a great idea. And, you know, the recognition of Moms Mabley and everything that she did is long overdue. I mean, the fact that a black woman comedian can rise to the heights that she did in the 50s and 60s and beyond, being from a tiny town in rural western North Carolina is incredible. And, you know, the fact that we don't, you know, that many of us don't know more about her, I think, is, could be troubling, but I think we're doing our best now to rectify some of that and make sure that she gets the recognition she deserves. And then that recognition, you know, shines on Brevard as well. So I think it's a great, a great project, and I'm excited to see it.
Mr. Daniel?
I think that this is a great way to honor, well, there's a theater that was there that she probably attended in her lifetime that is gone now, and I think this is a way to honor and represent that.
Mr. Morrow?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, echo some of the things that Monica mentioned. I am just struggling with the fact that the original concept here was evolving art that would complement the town. Not being said, Moms Mabley's father would be particularly proud because he owned this property and had a business where his neighbors couldn't participate. So I'm not against it, I'm just saying, I was totally shocked from the difference of what we intended before, because that site is such a historic site for other reasons, too. Then you probably have to think about even change, I assume there'll be other, maybe artists that are going to get painted there or something, what is the, what is the plan? Because we're going from something that's, that was considered evolving and rotating art to something that's permanent.
Does planning or Heart of Brevard want to address that question?
Most murals are painted with the intention of being there for five years.
That's what I mean.
It's taken almost a year and a half for the Public Art Advisory Committee to get to this point, so we've already started talking about what the next phase may be. I don't think that any mural or piece of art that's installed there would be permanent, but this would be a longstanding project, and a standalone project now, as it is part of the North Carolina Musician Mural Trail, which is a statewide initiative.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Morrow? Ms. Holder?
This is a little personal for me. My dad was a musician in New York and had met her, and he gifted me one of her albums that I still have. And so, and now I get to pastor church around the corner from where she grew up. And so I think it's remarkable of Brevard to do this and to honor her in this way, especially given the things that she had to live through and go through during that time, that many stories that I heard from my father that I know she endured as well. So, thank you.
Mr. Wise?
I also think this is a wonderful initiative. It honors an amazing woman, it honors an amazing place and time, and I also think, just in general, activating these spaces with art, kind of regardless of what the art is, is really critical to our environment. And that has, Clemson has sat there for a little while, and this is the kind of love and attention I love to see for any public space.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. Our third item of new business is the ground lease with Brevard Davidson River Presbyterian Church for workforce affordable housing project. Can I leave? Yep, Emily Brewer is back to brief us again.
Before she starts, Mayor, I want to just thank Sarah Van Leer and Sarah Odeo from DFI who are joining us here in person, so welcome to you both. I thought I saw Sarah outside. And they will be here at the end of the presentation to answer any detailed questions that you have about this proposal. But indeed, Emily's going to start us off, and then when she concludes, Mac and I will make a few comments as well.
Yes. Thank you again for allowing me to speak about this. This has been a long time in the works. I'm going to talk a little bit about what affordable housing is, what it looks like, and why we're talking about it today, and how we got to where we are. So what is affordable housing? This is a very important question. Housing is considered affordable if a household spends no more than 30% of their income on housing expenses like rent and utilities and insurance and a mortgage or property taxes or whatever that might look like. This 30% definition is the standard that's used by most housing programs, both local, state, federal, et cetera. And so that 30% becomes a really important piece, and that's why we use it. But putting that in context, the term affordable housing means housing that is affordable to people that earn up to 80% of the area median income or are otherwise deemed low to moderate income. I have on the screen an excerpt of some of the income limits for Transylvania County. As you can see, on the left-hand side, we have the percent of area median income, and then it varies based on the household size. And that's a really important distinction as well. But what that looks like, the low to moderate income households that we're talking about today are Brevard's workforce, the teachers, the healthcare workers, the sanitation workers, the police officers, the restaurant workers, the retail employees. All of these people earn 80% of the area median income or less. And what that translates to is that these people are often unable to afford housing in Brevard. Here are some examples of residents and their associated occupations in Brevard and what they're earning. So as you can see here, we have a senior resident, a restaurant server, a firefighter, and an elementary school teacher. At these income levels and assuming a one-person household size, that second row outlines the maximum amount that they could spend on housing each month to be considered affordable, for it to be considered affordable to them. But what we have right now is that the average current rental rate for a one-bedroom apartment is $1,960 per month, meaning that it's unaffordable for all of these people that we're looking at today. This really is just a snapshot, you know, rent levels change and all that kind of stuff, but we have very little available units in the city, and those that we do have available are out of reach for a lot of these, these critical members of our workforce. And so the Development Finance Initiative, Sarah and Sarah, have done a lot of research on the need that we have here in Brevard and did a housing needs assessment. And they put together a great summary that ultimately said, "We have a big housing need here." There are at least 830 households in Brevard with housing needs. Of those households, half are considered severely housing cost burdened, means they are spending over 50% of their income on housing. These numbers are current as of 2020, and we know that the housing crisis has continued to worsen in these post-pandemic years. And housing has continued to be identified as a top priority, both by the City of Brevard City Council, but also by its residents. The 2020, or, excuse me, the 2030 Comprehensive Land Use Plan had a robust community engagement effort. This was completed in 2022 and 2023, and expand housing opportunities for all residents was ranked as the number one goal time and time again. And it just shows that this is in a critical effort that affects everyone in our community. City Council responded to this by ranking affordable housing policies and funding as a top priority, both in last year's budget strategic planning retreat and in this year's strategic planning retreat. City Council has elevated the Housing Committee to be a policy committee that focuses more broadly on housing efforts and initiatives beyond just the Housing Trust Fund, which is what it was initially created. This expansion of scope allows the committee to take on different kinds of projects and really attack it from all sides, and allows them to also help and support some of these other projects, including the one we're talking about today. So, the project before you is a partnership for housing. This project started in late 2021 when the Brevard Davidson River Presbyterian Church approached the city with approximately four acres, give or take, of undeveloped land that's adjacent to their facilities. At the same time, the city was launching those housing initiatives that I just spoke about, we were hearing that housing was a critical priority and thinking about how we, as a city, can be involved in supporting affordable housing efforts in the community. Both the city and the church have a shared goal of ensuring that Brevard's workforce and its community members can afford to live here. This project was launched in 2022 when the city contracted with UNC School of Government's Development Finance Initiative to evaluate those housing opportunities on this and other sites in Brevard. So what DFI's scope of services is, is they're really here to support us in having private investment in housing development in our community. Their scope of work includes conducting pre-development work, identifying opportunity sites, assessing their feasibility, and then assisting us in soliciting a private development partner and negotiating the terms of a development agreement with the partners that they assist us in putting together. DFI has completed that Phase One Opportunity Site Analysis, or, excuse me, Identification, and, as I mentioned, put together that Housing Needs Assessment that was presented in the fall of last year that really comprehensively looks at all of the different elements of the housing crisis in Brevard. In October of last year, City Council instructed staff to begin developing an agreement with Brevard Davidson River Presbyterian Church so that we can continue with Phase Two, the site-specific pre-development analysis. This work will establish site-specific guiding public interests through a stakeholder engagement process, deepen the site and financial feasibility analyses, and determine site-specific development parameters. So looking at the unit mix, the density, the financial gap, the gap funding that's required, all of these different kinds of things are coming about in Phase Two. So before you today is that lease agreement between the church and the city that will allow us to move forward with Phase Two of this pre-development work and be able to move forward on this project. So I will hand it over to Wilson and Mac to talk a little bit more about the lease and the next steps.
We'll go to the next slide, please, Mac, and if you wouldn't mind taking us through these provisions, at least.
All right. Well, what we ended up in discussions with the church, and the church was represented by an independent attorney who was advising them, and through multiple rounds of negotiations, what we came to believe is the best for our situation is a three-year lease where the city would lease property from the Davidson River Church. And the reason for that is because the city has to have control of the property, actual control of the property, in order to engage DFI to do the studies that they need to do to proceed. So we would have a three-year lease, a dollar a year for the lease, with an option to purchase the property at the end of that time if it can be established that it will, that it will be feasible, put some sort of low-income housing on the, on the property, or affordable housing on the property. The only thing the city is allowed to do during the term of the lease is to engage DFI, do the testing that's required there. And that would be geological, it would be a whole bunch of words that frankly, I didn't quite understand, hydrological, meteorological, I'm not even sure what else, but that, a lot of, a lot of different tests that would be required. The main thing is to find out if there is likely to be a development partner who could purchase the property or lease the property from us or whatever in some way to build the type of affordable housing that we're looking for. We have We have essentially to find a development partner, if it's possible, that can build at least 24 units. It could be more, but a minimum of 24 units. And that's to make sure that it's worth the church's while. If they're going to be essentially donating this property for this kind of purpose, they want to be guaranteed that it's going to be used for that purpose. So at least 24 units. And there will be a, there's a five-year timeframe where that housing has to actually be in service and be built within five years from the date of the city actually purchasing the property from the church. There would be no, there would be no money exchanging hands on the actual purchase of the property. There are, you've seen it in the lease that's in there, very, very specific permitted uses on the property. In other words, we would have, we would be, if we ended up buying the property, we would be required to use it in very specific ways for affordable housing purposes. And that would translate further into whoever, if we ended up getting a development partner to work there, he would end up, that partner would have to also take those same restrictions as to what the permitted uses are. Would have to stick with those for an extended period of time. The idea behind this would be for DFI, with their connections, to determine what could be put on that site and then help us find development partners to make that development happen. This lease has not yet been approved by the full congregation under the Presbyterian Church rules. The purchases or sales of property can't be done until they're approved by the entire church. It has been approved by the leadership group of the church, which they call a session, and recommended the approval. It is recommended that this lease that's in your packet be brought to the church for their approval, but it's coming to us first. And if you so deem it appropriate, we could approve this lease and send it on to the entirety of the church for their final approval of the lease, and hopefully that would all be done. You see the timeline process. It'll be voted on by the church on June 9. There'll be another information session on June the 6 where any member of the church or anybody, I suppose, could come and ask questions prior to that vote. But we're here today asking for you to approve this. This lease has been, I can't even tell you how much time has been invested by members of the church. Keith Thompson's sitting out there, Pastor Keith, trying to hide. He's been instrumental in pushing this along. And of course, Sarah Odio and Sarah Van Leer are both unbelievable resources for the state of North Carolina, and they've been instrumental in assisting us. Because one of the things we had to figure out in these permitted uses and in these deed restrictions that would go if we got the property was, what's the developer likely to do? Will we be able to actually find somebody to do this? We want this to work. And so we've been, we've gotten down to what we think is going to achieve everybody's goals, this collaboration between the church and the city in providing some relief in that multi-pronged attack on the lack of affordable housing here. This is going to be one piece, and it has potential to be a major piece. And so I would ask you to consider this. I hope you had a chance to look through it, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have about the particulars of it.
Okay, so I'll wrap up by talking a little bit about what comes after June the 9. So Mayor, I hope you plan on being here on June the 10 because we'll need you to sign the lease that day. And once the lease is signed and in hand, we will send the geotechnical expert that we're about to hire out into the field to start his fieldwork. It'll take him a couple weeks of fieldwork and then a couple more weeks to put together his report. And so we'll know about the condition of the site and what would need to be done on it to develop something there. And then we'll pass that report on to the architecture firm, which we haven't hired yet, but we have three proposals from three reputable firms that we're reviewing now. And they'll take that information and put it in the pot and stir it up with all their expertise. And probably Sarah Van Leer by the end of the summer or early fall, they'll have a sort of initial plan on what a development on the site might look like and cost. And so this fall, and certainly no later than next winter when we start developing the budget, this council will have to begin holding serious conversations about what our financial contribution to this project is going to look like. Because if there's one thing the Saras and others in this industry can tell us is that these kind of projects require gap financing from various sources. And I think that we're certainly going to need to be part of the funding team for whatever this Phase Two analysis comes up with. So I'm just teeing that up for the fall when we'll start to need to have that complex and difficult conversation. And then finally, before that, before that even happens, if you'll go back to the timeline, please, Emily, that you were just on. Yep. I want to draw attention to the asterisk on the bottom of this page about public input. Our public engagement will include both voluntary and legally required opportunities. This site will require a rezoning, and so there are a number of public input opportunities built in to any rezoning process. But we don't think that's enough. So we're going to have a handful of voluntary public input opportunities. As the asterisk says, we don't know when and exactly what they're going to look like yet, but there will be some here in the months to come so that folks, whether they're neighbors, whether they're stakeholders, whether they're other interested parties, can come and weigh in on this project. And so that whatever we come up with eventually incorporates the feedback from stakeholders and will be accepted by them. And so public engagement is almost as important as the technical side work, site work for us in this project. So I just want to reiterate that to everyone out there who, you know, has concerns or reservations about this project, that you'll have plenty of opportunities to weigh in. And so that's all I have to say. As I said, Sarah and Sarah are here, and they are the technical experts. And so if you want to delve into anything we covered in more detail, they can help answer those questions.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution adopting the ground lease?
So moved.
Okay. Ms. Holder, any comments?
No, I'm excited. And so thank you for your presentation and just excited about moving forward.
Mr. Wise.
Thanks to Davidson River Presbyterian Hiding in the Lobby for this opportunity and to DFI for helping us navigate this. Emily, could you pull up the slide with, showed all the occupations and the relative money people make? I just want to emphasize, next, before that one. I think, yeah, that one. Just look at who makes up our community. That's what we're talking about. And I think that's the most important thing here. The kind of people that, I want those people in my neighborhood, for sure. So as we move through this process, I think it's important to really start to understand the kind of people in our community that we're trying to help and serve. And finally, we talked about weird land earlier, and this is a prime weird land candidate. So there'll be a good bit, I love the logicals, the geologicals, the hydrologicals. So hopefully not mythological. As an architect, all the logicals are great. So I am actually curious about what the realities of this site are as we move forward. This is very exciting.
Mr. Morrow.
I feel really honored to have been part of this early on, and it is a faith-based initiative of looking at land that is not being used. It would be nice if it were 10 acres. It's a little tight. We know that. I like the fact it's got some characteristics that are good, but some also characteristics that will be a little challenging. But the nice thing, it is connected to a public street. It gives us the opportunity to take a road over to Johnson Street. It gives opportunities for, perhaps in the future, for federal lands to add more to it and get to that 10 acres, you know, possibly in Phase Two. So it's just got a lot of good pieces to it. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Daniel.
Yeah, well, I'm excited also. I kind of hope that this is the start of something, that we can show folks that this can work, and it can work here in Brevard. So I'm looking forward to seeing that. I did have one question for Mac Keller. It said that the lease after five years, if it's not, yeah, so it's three lease, three-year lease, and then option to purchase, but in five years after, is that?
The way that works is it's, the lease will be in effect for three years. That is the time we think the studies can be done to establish what might or might not be able to happen. Within that three years, hopefully, we'll be able to attract a partner with, as Wilson said, with maybe some contribution, attract a partner to actually do the building and be the, who builds the building and manages it. And we would purchase the property from the church at that time.
Okay.
And that is when the five-year, and then that project will need to be completed and up and running within five years.
So the purchase is determined by finding the contractor?
By, that's correct. If we determine that this property, for whatever reason, is not suitable to sustain 24, a development of 24 units, the lease terminates after three years, and we all walk our, walk away. But if we do purchase it, then it's, the project has to be up out of the ground in five years.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Baker.
Yeah. You know, this is just the beginning. So there's a, there's a long road to go, but I can't help feeling, I guess I'm in a sentimental mood today. But I think it is really remarkable that we are here, really, one year after, you know, we included housing in the city's budget for, in a substantive, is that a word? Substantive? That's a word. In a substantive way, for the very first time. And, you know, the amount of work that has gone on behind the scenes is pretty remarkable. A lot of creativity, a lot of compassion. And I think it's pretty amazing that, you know, the first major project to, for the city to address affordable housing is a partnership with.
Can we use the word collaboration?
Collaboration, sure.
There's all sorts of broad legal definitions with partnership. I'm sorry.
It's a lot coming from the guy that just brought up meteorology. But thank you. A partnership. Collaboration, sorry, collaboration. Excuse me. But yeah, I just think it's amazing that we're here one year later. And I know there's a long way to go. And there, I'm learning a new term, probably watching too much news and, you know, certain trials that may or may not be going on right now. But I learned the word pre-buttal. And.
I've been called that before.
Yeah. At least part of the word, sure. But a pre-buttal is something, you could say, explain what it is better than I could, but anticipating a future argument and arguing against it before it has actually been made. And when affordable housing gets discussed, inevitably, there are folks that come and say that, you know, they're very compassionate and agree that affordable housing is needed, but whatever land we're talking about for that project, it's just not the right place. It should be somewhere else. So my pre-buttal to that is that if you're going to make that argument, please come with a donation of land that is somehow better than this one with an entire congregation that is in agreement that they would like to tackle this issue in collaboration with the city. Because, you know, I would contend that such a piece of land does not exist out there. And this is a really amazing collaboration between partners. How about that? Collaboration between partners? Can I say that? Okay. And I'm just really, I'm glad that we're at this point and look forward to working on it some more.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. That was our last item of new business. We will move on to remarks and future agenda considerations. And we will start with Mr. Wise.
Thanks for all y'all for sitting through that. Got a little punchy at the end, but that's okay. It seems like a million years ago, but I want to point out the Public Works Week, what's that called? Acknowledgement, whatever it is. It should be Public Works, like month and year, because those guys are amazing. And finally, also feels like a million years ago, the TC Comprehensive Plan. Go to those workshops. That include, that's important for all of us. We're in the city, but we're part of the county, and it will really help govern our whole path and direction. I'm just going to leave it at that.
Ms. Holder.
Is this a space to say something else about the budget?
Whatever you want to say.
Okay. I confirmed that Mrs. Jones's report that the fee for special collections is going from 50 to 75. And so what I was thinking is, what if we have one free pickup per year, per resident, you know, for big things, big items? You know, give them that one free and then the next one pay for it. I don't think we have a lot of pickups as it is, so it's not a lot towards the budget to add to the budget. And so I wouldn't take that much from it. But I think that that will help some of our residents if we gifted them one free pickup per year. And as you can see, I'm all for residents. I'm all for, you know, doing whatever we can to help each other in this process of living life. So that's all I have, and thank you. Thank you all for being here.
Mr. Morrow.
I want to talk just a minute about Clemson Plaza and tonight's decision, and if you will, moves this in a certain direction. But let's not forget that the Frank D. Clement Building was amazing structure, $600,000 building in 1926, would hold the first jewelry store, the first photography shop, the home of First Citizens Telephone Company, the Ford Federal Savings and Loan, but not to mention state-of-the-art movie theater. It would be the first integrated theater in Transylvania County in 1939. Out of that, those businesses, it was sort of an incubator of civic leadership. The building was owned, built by Frank D. Clement. It was called the Frank D. Clement Building. His son Vern, who'd just come back from World War I, he would build this movie theater for him because that was his interest. He had been the former manager of the Auditorium, which was the existing theater that was over what today is the. over what today is the Island Books. But this would be the, you've got to remember, talking movies were the brand-new thing in 1926. And so, my sense is that what I'd really like to see is, let's restore the name Clemson Plaza to honor that history. Let's do a rendering of the building and tell the story. John Ford would become mayor once the Bivard, they built an addendum for Bivard Federal Savings and Loan, and Ford's Corner became an item, and he became mayor, just as did Vern Clement, Frank's son. So there's a story there, but I do like the part that Moms Mabley's dad owned the land before. So there's a lot to be told. The story of the very first integrated movie, Heritage of the West, was the Zane Gray novel, and supposedly written, not supposedly written by Zane Gray, who was, has been determined in some ways as an illegitimate son born in Transfaite County. Interesting why they picked that movie. But anyhow, a lot to be told there. That's just one thing. So I would like to see the downtown master plan committee staff, whatever. Let's look at this thing holistically. I'd like to ask, too, Mr. Manager, in the budget, we have $74,000 for Franklin Pool. Does that, we asked maybe too late last year for swimming lessons? Is that, I'd like to suggest that we ask the management company if they could not provide swimming lessons. And if so, what the impact might be.
They're working on that there. They need lifeguards who want to give them, if they're willing to do it.
Okay, so they've just got to have WSI, or one, they just need one. All right. So also, I had two things. I did meet with the RPO last week, and it was, Bivard was all about the move in our meeting. They did approve the, what's called, shoot, downtown circulation. That was approved last week, and as well as the announcing that the bridge would be delivered next month. So we'll all want to go there. They talk about a great field trip, was going to go to Davidson River, whatever day that it is, and go see the bridge coming. Okay? That's all.
That's plenty, great. Mr. Daniel.
I have nothing to say.
Mr. Baker.
Yeah, a couple of things. I'll try to be quick. And I guess I'll piggyback on something Mac said about the RPO, and, you know, several of us are members of outside boards as well. And I've been thinking lately that we probably need a mechanism for reporting back some of the activities of those boards back to this, this body here, and whether that's through the consent agenda and minutes that might be included in that, or, you know, biannual report from those groups. But, you know, things like, like the downtown circulation pattern, I would love to know what that is, and what that approval means for Bivard, and whether that is still the study of the, is it the one ways that is?
Whatever it means.
And is that the study of that potential? Or it had, that plan has not been approved, it is just the study, correct? Okay. But those are the types of things that I think we need, you know, I'm on TEA, so the Economic Alliance, and certainly I would think that others on this board would be interested in the activities of that group. So just a way that we can stay up to date on what they're doing. And then, just one more comment on, that's related to budget, and it made me think of it when, when the housing topic we discussed tonight came up. But, you know, we can, we can do big things as a, as a small city, but it does take a level of dedication and focus that I think can be difficult for a small municipality. And that's certainly been my experience, I think, in the last few years on council. And sometimes, I feel like we're a bit like a golden retriever who's in a yard full of squirrels, and we have a hard time planning ahead for a project that may take 20 years. But one of the ways that we do that is by creating funds that we then endow with monies over a multi-year period. And that money can then be brought to bear for grants that duplicate the effort and make it bigger than it is. But it starts with the seed money from the city, and it starts with a dedication from this council on certain big things that we agree are priorities. And certainly, housing is at the top of the list for me, but the Estito Trail also, and things like the downtown master plan. So I'm hoping that we can maybe avoid being those golden retrievers too often, and focus on, on some big priorities that we all have.
Mr. Attorney.
Just a reminder, we have a very brief closed session. It should be reasonably brief. I've talked enough tonight, thanks.
Madam Clerk.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Is Pastor Keith still out there? Keith, quit hiding, man. I just wanted to recognize Keith for his leadership role in the lease, and holding the hand of his ad hoc committee in his session through this very complicated and arduous process. You know, he's a clergy, so he's a peacemaker, and so he did it with a gentle hand. And I just admired his leadership during this whole thing, and I hope it will continue forward as we work further on this project. So thank you, Keith. And I also want to just take a moment of privilege, you know, usually I sort of keep my personal opinion and my, you know, sort of values to myself in this job, but I felt very honored, feel very honored to be a part of this. Earlier, I said something was serendipitous. Well, I think on this particular project, it's providential that the church's discipleship and our public service aligned at this moment in time. And so, I'm very grateful for that, and I look forward to seeing it unfold here over the next few years.
Thank you. Yes, well, I think you can see just how busy and how dynamic our little town is. And, you know, you can see how difficult it is for council wrestling with the budget, on all of the priorities, on all of the things we want to do. But we are moving forward in such great areas and such important areas. And I have to just echo what everyone has said, that I am so excited that we are moving forward with the Presbyterian Churches Initiative, and I want to thank Pastor Keith, and I also want to thank Councilman Morrow, because that's where it started, with these two gentlemen right here. They had the vision, they understood the potential, and they started this about two years ago, I think it was, at least two years.
We kept it a secret a year, didn't we?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was, it took a lot of work and a lot of time. And I know there've been a lot more staff involvement, but I'm extremely excited that we are collaborating with one of our faith organizations on something that is so critical, really, to the future of our community. And that's what it's all about. The city cannot do these projects alone. We need organizations, we need our nonprofits, we need our faith groups. We need people to step up and work with us to make this the community that we want in the future. So, thank you, Pastor Keith, thank you to the Presbyterians. I look forward to hearing from the full congregation, and, and moving forward. And also, moving forward with Clemson Plaza, with the fact that we have now approved one of our first pieces of public art. We've talked about this for years. Again, we are taking, and we are really honoring our history, we are honoring what was in Clemson Plaza, we are honoring Moms Mabley, we are saying how much we value our downtown, and how we want it to be a dynamic place that people come to, to not just enjoy, but to learn, to learn about the history of Brevard, because it is such a rich history. We are moving forward with Probarth Street, with the approval of the supplemental funding. We are putting in place traffic safety on one of our streets. Again, another major accomplishment, to see if we can get some of the speeding under control. So we just have so many things going on, that it is so exciting to be part of this community, and to work for the future and how we make it better. Just a couple of reminders, we all know, we've got a really big weekend coming up, White Squirrel Weekend starts Friday night through Sunday night. So we will have many, many visitors in town, we will have much of our community out there downtown, but that is happening this coming weekend. I encourage you all to come out and support the festival, enjoy the music, and support our local vendors and businesses. We are also opening the pool on Saturday, so another great day for our families. Franklin Pool will open Saturday, and it will then be open, of course, Sunday and Memorial Day, and then it'll be open on weekends until school gets out, and then we'll go to a fuller schedule. So again, just a lot of things happening. Then Monday, we have our Memorial Day ceremony at 10 o'clock in front of the courthouse, when we will give thanks to those who fought and died, so that we can enjoy this community, we can enjoy our freedoms, and we can move forward in collaboration, in partnership, in unity, in faith, in kindness with, with our community, so. And if you haven't been to Clemson Plaza recently, be sure to go and look at our Hope mural, which is up there right now. It looks absolutely gorgeous. We have had so many members of our community writing messages of hope on there. So again, a very, very special event. If you haven't filled out your age-friendly community survey, and you are over 50 years old, and you are a resident of Transylvania County, please do so. We've got flyers over there with the QR code or the link, but this is an attempt to try and make our community even friendlier for older residents. And so, I'm asking people to please get the word out, maybe Pastor Keith can put it out to his congregation. I know Pastor Holder has also done that. But we are working, again, trying to make sure that we are reaching our entire demographic, and that that attitude of caring and compassion, and taking care of people, and moving forward, applies to everybody in our community. And finally, I will just mention, the next Meet the Mayor is going to be on June 11th, from noon to 1:30 at the Mary C. Jenkins Community Center. So if you want to come talk to the mayor about anything that's going on, you're more than welcome to join me that day. So with that, I think I need a motion to go into closed session for litigation, pending litigation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Please clear the room, please stop the broadcast.